Yeah, talking about, you know, will you hide the firm to take care of that? So I just wanted to...
Oh, I don't have that. AVL's report on bringing the balance sheet items up to snuff. I don't have that report from, but I mean, it's in the process. I mean, they're working. I think they had a couple of about forty something hours to do it, and I don't know whether they spread that or not.
Okay, I'm just trying to find that out.
All right, that it? Mr. Collins? Mr. Deming? Mr. Tisdale?
No report.
Mr. Barrett?
No report.
I have no report as well. We'll move on to citizens' comments, this section as well. We have, we don't have a time stated, but we'll just say up to forty-five minutes. Each person will have three minutes to speak on any topic that they would like. When you come up here at the podium or at the desk, sign in your name and address legibly and state it for the record for the clerk to record. I'll start on this side of the room. Yes, sir.
My name is John Higgins. I come here to talk to you about the homeless epidemic. Last week, I gave all, two, three weeks ago, I gave all y'all a copy of the rules and the front page and this cover page, and it is not, you gotta cut the police department and throw all this out and so they can go on your property and arrest somebody, or someone's breaking in your house, staying away in your yard, they can't go take nothing. Turn and tell me this is worthless. Then the cops tell me, you need to put a whole bunch of no trespassing signs in your front yard. You know, Bugsy's gonna look if everybody down the beach puts a no trespassing sign in their front yard. You know, escape from terrorism. Everybody has to have a trespassing sign. Now, that old man told me, there's a bunch of people who don't go to the Shell Station on Porter. He's carrying his forty-five. He says it looks like a union meeting on the side of that building. They're smoking grass, drinking beer, and I asked him what he was talking about. I said, "Looks like they all belong different countries. They just do whatever they want right there, right across the throat throat property." And then a bunch of always telling they scared to go to the food giant, right there across the police department. This is all Bugsy people. This ain't a bunch of terrorists and people. And the worst part is that the Bugsy cemetery, they got one couple of bombers walking around with dog liches, asking everybody if they seen their dog. And by the way, you get, you got your money, you know, they bombing, they doing all this. Well, I have my friend who was the DA of Miami, he told me a bunch of pedophiles go around with dog liches, trying to get kids to help them, then they rape them. You got all this stuff going on right there one mile from the police department, and nobody's doing nothing. Go to Benaki right now, take a picture of that tent city on the beach. And tomorrow morning, you go and take a picture of that tent city, because I've done it three days in a row. It's exactly the same way every day. What's the odds that they tear it down, move it? They live in there. And they getting ready to turn that Bugsy beach, just like they do down in California. You could have a bunch of homeless people living all over, you know? It's pitiful. You know, I started just the mayor, the city manager, turned to the police chief, and this was, I got three cops telling me this, and the ex-buicks of the police chief. Then they're not supposed to arrest nobody. They're not supposed to do anything to these people. They still walking down Howard Avenue drinking beer every day. They, 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 they all have all the walls that all y'all supposed to go by? Nobody's doing nothing. You got all these old Bugsy people scared to death.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left, your right? Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. I'm Sarah Chrisler Ruskey. I'm the director of the Harrison County Library System. My address is 12135 Old Highway 49, and I wanted to take the opportunity to thank you for your support in the many years I have been here, and focus on a few positive things as far as what the library is doing. And as you all know, the last few years have been very challenging with COVID. It's been especially difficult for libraries where a lot of our services are in person, and we've had to find ways to adapt, and I think we've done that pretty successfully. But we're really happy to see over the last several months, we have increased visits, we have increased participation, we have increased stats with our computer usage, and for example, we had over forty thousand items used last month. We had twenty-five thousand people visiting, so that continues to increase, and we're very happy to see that. We also had over a thousand children registered for our summer reading program, and that's more than we had in the, for the last pre-COVID year. And we had over five thousand people attend programming for all ages, mostly for children, but for all ages in the last month. So those are some really positive things that I'd like you to know about that we're doing, and I don't want that to get lost in the hubbub of the current moment, because I, I'm very proud of the many things that we're doing for the community. Besides the routine programming and the routine services that we have, I also wanted to underline a couple of, we talked to previous years about outside funding and trying to find different sources. We got a national competitive grant for help with some of the local history materials. They have gotten assistance for scanning the Henman Collection and the Sun-Herald Collection. Those are some enormous archives that were donated and that are really important. And hopefully, you've seen some of those on Facebook. There've been some really wonderful images that have been shared dozens, thousands and thousands of times, so we're excited to see that. We're also working with our friends at the CTA to do another grant that was a national competitive grant, so quarter of a million dollars, and we're putting Wi-Fi on a couple of bus routes with them. It's in the testing phase. We also are, we finally got delivery with the supply chain problems of a custom mobile outreach vehicle. So we're, we're looking forward to things like coming to First Friday or other events in the different communities in the county with our mobile outreach, where we can get to people who can't come to us. And that, I think that's gonna really increase our ability to serve people, especially people who are the most disadvantaged, and also do some fun things. So I just wanted to highlight those things, and I also wanted to assure you that the board is working on some policy changes to address concerns that have been expressed in the community. They are taking a very deliberate approach to, to the policy, getting advice from the Library Commission in Jackson, and I think we can move forward to get to a place where, I can talk more later. I'm sure y'all might have questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left, your right, like to come up and speak? Raise your hand if you want to be recognized. Anyone on my right, your left? Anyone in the back of the room? Public comments is now closed. We'll move on to the policy agenda. The clerk would state the subject matter.
Subject matter of the meeting is to discuss the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and open discussions on non-departmental. Mayor, any opening remarks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think you all have this schedule of what non-departmental expenses is gonna be and a little bit of the economic development. This is pretty much in a same position we were in twenty-one, twenty-two, and there's a couple of additions, but bottom line, I think we're a little bit below the non-departmental expenses from last year. And I'm really here, you know, everybody I think recognizes, you know, the items and the object codes that describe the kind of expensives, and I think that's our best guess, what we needed to be as far as the, you know, the revenues, expenses, and, and other opportunities. So I'm here to answer any questions, and Diana and Regina are here to answer questions.
I have a question, and because it's our biggest item, it's over ten percent of our total revenues that we take in, and we just heard from the library director on the library system. There's an increase, last year, we increased the contribution, I believe, if I recall, and this year, there's another $10,000 request to increase it even further. I do have some questions, if you could come up to the front. The first question I have, if I recall, last year, we, you, the library was asking for an increase for computers and/or labor, is that...
Mainly for, to, and we, we had, most of our staff, I believe it was twenty-five percent of our Biloxi staff was being paid eight twenty-five an hour, so we asked for an increase to bring that up to ten, which is still well below the Biloxi, Biloxi staff minimum, I believe. I'm not a hundred percent sure. But that was what the bulk of the, that was what the increase was for.
And did you increase their, their salaries from that amount?
We did.
Okay, the rest of the money, was it spent on any additional purchases?
That amount went to the increases. We were not able to, we, we had a donation from the Friends to buy computers because the city has not funded that, that purchase. That increase was for salaries, and salaries and benefits, salary expenses.
Has the county approved any increases yet, or are you requesting an increase from the county?
No, they have not at this time. They provide, they have over the years provided some one-time monies that, so that put their budget a little bit higher than last year, but, but they, they are, they are above, say, four years ago. I'd have to look back at my budget, but they increased last year to help us with the salaries and some other expenses, and this year, it's close, but it's not quite the same.
How much do you receive from the county monetarily?
Let's see, I believe it's, it's nine ninety is what I have in, in the draft. We have not had our budget hearing with them.
That's fine. That's fine.
Ninety, yes.
All right, that's, I'll come back to it. Does anybody else have any questions?
One question, I know we, the building loan, and we paid for the, we paid about roughly $2 million for the library system, the city of Biloxi, with the lights, the housing, the insurance, everything like that. Does the county fund any money for the buildings, for anything else?
They fund, they are responsible for the Orange Grove, the headquarters, and also downtown Gulfport, those buildings they are responsible for.
I'm talking about downtown Gulfport. I'm talking about Biloxi. We fund the city of Biloxi, roughly about $2 million.
I'm not sure about the behind-the-scenes costs, because I don't...
And you thought doing the building and the lights and all the other stuff, we pay all that.
We pay some of the utilities. Again, I'd have to look at my budget, but we, we also, I know we paid some of the utilities, and we also have insurance, like, I think like this is going out, but contents insurance and...
I guess most of the people saying you need to spend the library, I must say, they don't know how much money the city puts in. So the Alabert System, Biloxi, I know it's Harrison County Library System, but we fund a ton of that.
Sure, I understand the, are you asking, does the county fund any of the Biloxi buildings?
No, actually, well, I'm trying to figure out how much they put up, and who put up. They do on the county, we do on the city.
I'm not sure how much they put up behind the scenes like that. I don't get those numbers, but I know, like, I, none of the cities fully fund the operation expenses, so that is filled in with county money, and also state money. We get a, a grant for personnel expenses from the state. So, but none of the cities fund for us. Like I said, I don't know what your sort of behind-the-scenes cost is, but the county fills in and also pays for all the headquarters costs, so this, any of the centralized things, that comes from the county.
Well, the several hundred thousand that we normally give you, is it strictly payroll?
It's from materials and insurance and supply, you know, all kinds of operating, any operating expenses and salaries and materials are on that. It's not just salaries, it's, it's everything else.
Collins, anything? Ms. Newman?
Just with financials, you said the county is cutting back, or it's not what it was last year?
Mm-hmm.
And so I'm just looking at the increase just for this year. Mr. Mayor, I mean, I think it's fair to say that this is just a pass-through tax. The county collects the majority of taxes, that we, we raised the city of Biloxi, and they're refusing to, to fund the library, so the library's required to come to us and ask us to pay the money that the county should. I mean, this is something that we really need to address. It's a pass-through tax to us again.
Well, I don't consider it, they're refusing to. We, we asked for this amount because in relation to the previous years and to the, the amounts they've given us above and beyond, you know, like, they've helped us fund a cabling project that we asked for extra, so I'm trying to, trying to adjust it, you know, to a level spot, I guess, if that makes sense.
Well, the city of Biloxi does a lot too, besides funding. I mean, we have a lot of opportunity losses, tax and things like that that we could generate had it not been a, a library within the system. But I, I still think that when the county says, "We're not gonna give you what you want, we're gonna reduce it, and then you come to us and ask us for more," it feels like a pass-through tax to us. I'm not blaming you for doing that. It's fiduciary, it's, it's your fiduciary responsibility to come get the money where you can. So I'm not blaming you for asking us, and I'm not even, not even blaming anyone else. I'm just saying that, that it's something that we need to address. We deal with the county on so many levels where the funding is disproportionate for what's raised and why it's raised. And so this is just another one that I wanted to point out to the mayor.
I would like to shift the blame, though. I don't want the county to take the fall for my request. Like, they, it, it's not something where I went and said, "Hey, would you give me this?" And they said, "No." What I would love to see is for us to be on a millage basis with all our fundings, funders, and then it could be fairly adjusted through that means, and we could see growth over time. But until that happens, if it ever happens, it is sort of, it's a, it's an art rather than a science.
Well, that would require coordination amongst the different cities and the county, and that's...
Well, it can be done individually, because the legislation has already passed for, for libraries to receive millage from any funders, luckily, but we just, it wasn't set up that way back in...
To shift gears?
Yes.
I want to go into the, the policy adjustments that you guys were discussing. I know this last meeting and what was brought to us and presented to us, there's been, there's been a minor uproar about, about what occurred, about the displays and things like that. So what, what are some of these potential policies that you're, that you're putting in place?
Well, we, there wasn't a library in the state in the past that had an internal display policy. We had things about, like, if, you know, if the Historical Society wanted to do a display or anybody else wanted to do a display, we didn't really have one, because it's just, you know, I have, we have nine branches. We have hundreds of displays every year, and different staff have different interests. They do displays, and it's never really been a topic of that much interest. And this year, it has become more, you know, divisive, and so we are working on putting together a policy where there is a thought process linking, making sure we link displays to our mission, and making sure there is an oversight process, especially for anything written that is in a display. We haven't, I don't think this is on, we haven't completed that, because we, we presented the draft at the last meeting. The board wanted to, you know, have more time to think about it, because it is, you know, you have to be careful not to be too limiting in your language, where you get into First Amendment challenges and things like that. But you also want, you know, you want there to be a process, so that we can make sure, because as a library, we want to represent all the citizens, but we also want to be, we try to be informational rather than trying to go one, one way, you know, like, we would never do an election exhibit where we supported one side, or, you know, we, we would have it be, "This is where you go to vote," and, you know, maybe information on the parties through time. So we want to make sure that we are informational and not giving any sort of message that is beyond that. So we're working on language for that, and like I said, it, we're getting advice from experts, and it may take us a little time, but we are, we are working hard to get something. I'm not saying we'll never have any display that make, that doesn't, that makes anybody mad again, you know, or that, that is, that is, that does produce controversy, but we will, we will make sure that we, we think through them and we have a process for doing that.
Policy be available to us?
Once it's passed and final, which I, I can't, we're having a meeting in August, and I feel like the board wants to put this in place, so depending on, on how much, how much debate there is, I'm not really sure what, what, what their feelings are and what they might want to add. Because we also, like I mentioned, if we're doing something that might limit speech, we probably also want to have, you know, legal look at it as well, so, but, but we are a pretty efficient group, so I think it, it's not gonna be a lengthy, we don't have to have multiple readings and all that stuff, so I think it could be an efficient process.
Well, thank you. As, as representatives of large groups of people and as participants in our community, I think everyone on the council would look forward to seeing those policies as soon as they're available.
Certainly.
Thank you.
We put them on the website, by the way. Once, once they are available, all of those are on our website.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, I appreciate everybody being here. Usually, we have non-departmental discussions on budget appropriations, usually sometime in August, so it's a little early this year, but that's all right. We, we can adjust on our end, but I know it's sometimes difficult to switch gears and pull information together if, if you're making an appropriation request. The Library Commission has a board of directors, right? I believe most of them are here today.
Oh, trustees, yes.
Trustees, and if, if anybody has a question about anything related to the library that might even become controversial, that's why you have the trustees.
Yes.
You have the collective wisdom of the trustees, and I think there's a trustee from, one from each city and one from the county at large, roughly, so, and I think Mr. Vincent spoke to that the other day. So there, there's an appeal process if there's an issue that comes up. I noticed that the request this year is for an additional $10,000 from $723,000 to $733,000, and was that your request to the administration, or is the administration making that request? And you were just as surprised as we may have been to see that.
No, we, we usually, we work on the budget in the administrative offices of the library, because we're the ones who are, you know, seeing the expenses and, you know, doing that. So it, we have seen, you, I'm sure the city has as well, you've seen enormous insurance increases, and the price of books has gone up, the price of gas, we have vehicles, everything has gone up. So that's, that's what we're trying to cover mainly with, we, with this. And we're, we're trying to do that in most other places as well. We're hoping, if I'm optimistic, next year, we might get a little bit more state funding that'll help us out, but I, I shouldn't count any chickens, I suppose.
Okay, and that, that concludes my next question, which would have been, how are you gonna use that ten grand? And the answer is, we're gonna use it to deal with those rising costs. How are you fixed for technology? I know that you received some additional monies, or all's, I think there were a number of computers that were replaced, that patrons use, but there may be others that...
We, we replaced the patron computers, and then the Friends of the Library gave some to help start on staff computers, but we're still, we're still lagging on that, because, you know, we, we started asking, if you remember, when I, I first moved here in 2018, was when we started this process, and now it's 2022, and so the ones that we started with are now becoming obsolete, as, as you know how that happens very quickly. But, but we, we have more options with the patron computers now, with a lot of people using Chrome. There are, there are some additional ways that we can, we can cut expenses, hopefully, going forward with, with that in some, in some places.
That's not just here in Biloxi, that's, that's throughout the library system.
Everywhere, but especially here, because we, we never got, I, I don't remember at this point the full amount of, that we requested for that, for that action. We, we got a partial...
Well, I appreciate your efforts on behalf of the community with a public library. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Mr. Barrett, anything?
The only question I have right now is the policies that, that are being looked over. Are there any way that we could get an email copy of that?
Once it's, once it is completed, I'm happy to send it to you, and it will be posted, be publicly posted all of our public facing policies for, you know, on our website.
All right, thank you.
I got it. I want to come back to a couple of points. When is your fiscal year?
It's the same as yours. It starts in October.
Okay. Do you have an audited income statement?
Yes, we are audited every year.
Okay.
An external auditor.
All right, could you forward a copy of that?
Yes. And I just did want to pick up on something Mr. Tisdale said, is that I, I would, if, if there are questions or concerns, please, please contact me or Dave if you have things that come up, because I definitely want to hear about things, the earlier the better, if there are questions or, you know, if you want to see other things like policies or, or financials or anything like that.
We appreciate that open door policy. Thank you for that. On HR decisions, do y'all have an HR department, or who makes hiring decisions?
It, it depends on the level of the hire. Generally, at the branch level, each city has a head librarian, and so the head librarian and manager are involved in that. You know, there are some that I am involved in, like, especially if there's a new, we have a new manager at our Walmart at library, and so I interviewed for, when, when Ms. Posey retired, because that's, you know, if it's a higher level, I really want to be involved in making those decisions. If it's, if it's, you know, if it's, if it's not, then it, it just depends on timing. I like to be at any interviews, but I'm not always able to.
So I, I just assume that you have a staffing guide or a staffing guideline with positions? Are those fully filled at this point?
I, I'm, we didn't, we have had a lot of turnover, so I would say we, we definitely have a few openings right now. I want to share, and we have a couple of part-time.
You gotta talk it into Mike.
Yeah, there...
Yeah. Thank you. Can you mind repeating that, so the...
Sure. She said three, there are three clerk, part-time clerk positions open, and they haven't all been posted. And then Ms. Jane Shambra, who I'm sure you all know, who's at Local History, has been there for about sixteen years full-time, is retiring, so that position will be open soon.
What happens during the year if you, you find you're coming up short with your income sources or your projected income sources? What happens in that case?
It would depend on the amount, if it were, as a couple of...
So if it was $10,000, what would you do?
We'd have to cut something. It might be books, like we did before, when we had, when you cut our budget thirty thousand two years ago, we, we didn't order materials for Biloxi. You know, we, it might be, it would really just depend on, on the amount, how much we could cut and where we... You know, there are some things we can't cut, like insurance or electricity type, type things. We can't cut back on that. So it's either staff or books, usually.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions. Anybody else have any other remarks?
Yeah. Go ahead, go ahead.
Most people that we donate the money to, we have them give us an annual report. As a librarian, there's a same contract, they have to give the city an annual report of their funding and their expenditures.
Other than, you know, your interaction with us, you know, in an official audit or something like that, I don't think anybody else, other than, or, and...
I think, and I think Councilwoman Glavin just asked for that, and she's gonna supply that. But yeah, we, we do ask that from anyone who's receiving money as non-departmental. We, we, it's basically, sometimes it's on request, sometimes they send it to us.
And ours was just completely, well, it was in May, or end of May, so we, we didn't...
Most of it required an outside audit.
That's what we have.
Someone outside of the library.
That's what we have.
They must have the museum to that. They don't have to do that.
That's right.
We have to put that into effect, and we need to put that. It is a lot of money we put into this. All we have to do is prove we're spending it, pretty much the name of the game. Just like any annual report. I mean, that's something that needs to be put on the table, for sure. And we should receive a report, especially that much money from anybody. Make sure that's done, so we just need to put in, put this, whatever. We need an annual report from outside audit. need to put in, put this, whatever. We need an annual report from outside audit.
Well, I think, you know, they do that audit and they'll provide that information. I'd like to make a comment though, generally in looking at, and I don't know whether you have any statistics, like my little brain works on, like books per person in jurisdictions or something like that. I'm just kidding now, okay?
We have 300,000 books or so.
But yeah, I do notice.
Yes.
I do want, and George mentioned something about 124 years old and we're putting something years old. We do have, you know, more libraries than anybody and we want to be simply the best. So we got four, four, you know, facilities. And I think the latest one we added in Walmart represents, you know, a pretty significant effort. We're putting significant dollars in it. And, you know, everybody has questions on the effectiveness of it. And, you know, if you look at 2020 or actually 60 Minutes talking about this is transformational, your business is transformational every day. You got to, you know, bob and weave and do the things that need to be do, that need to be done to keep up with information. So, you know, to be the best, you got to, you know, step up to the plate. And I think this is what the council asks is some reasonable information for them to make decisions. But we do have twice as many libraries as Gulfport. Again, I don't know how many square feet, but I can, I can make a case with statistics, but I do, I think we're supportive of, of your asking and where we need to be. But we do expect to stay on the edge and make sure that we, you know, meet the challenges that pop, the challenge every day. It'll be a surprise to not have a surprise. So that's my statement.
All right. I guess my biggest thing is finding the largest donation we give to anybody.
Well.
In the library.
Well, it's not so.
No, nobody has a problem with the system. Nobody has a problem with the system. You just prove the nickels, what you do to win. That's all, that's all I'm asking. Just like anybody we deal with.
Let me, let me.
Nobody give money to the library.
Let me respond. It's a service. It's a service that citizens need. It's a resource. And that's what I think, what we're trying to get over. This is a resource. It can be valuable to your citizens and to, to our, you know, our people. So.
If, if the, if the audit is in my email, I can send it to your office to be distributed. I, I feel like I have a PDF in my email and I can do it from here and I'll, I'll get. But if not, I'll do it as soon as I get back to my office. We're happy to share that.
Yeah.
You're staying here. You want to make sure we're, we're doing good things with your money.
We understand a library is not a big revenue producer. I mean, it's not that private.
No, we don't.
It's not like some other thing where they can make money. But anyway, it's just nice to know.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Gomes.
Thank you.
Mr. Gomes?
Oh, you gave it. Oh, yeah. I'll just make a final comment. And I think the mayor hit it on the head. The public library is a service to our community. And I'm a product of public library. I'm a product. So we have to have service in our communities because there are a lot of people who don't have access and don't have internet. And that's the only opportunity. And then with a small increase, you know, those are pennies on the dollar because their usage ship is up and since pre Katrina. So this is, you know, this is a well thought out, well done. And, and I see no problem with it actually. You know, they're squeezing. So thank you guys for all what you do. Thank you.
Ms. Newman?
Yeah. So I was going to say, I would like to see the policies that are probably going to be set in place as well. As you know, I've always been an advocate for the library system. Every year I push for exactly what you ask for and for your employee raises and computers. But I would like to say, you know, I think that the libraries, as I grew up, they were always there for knowledge on jobs, you know, curriculum, projects, reports, things like that. So anything special other than that, I think that's what Amazon is for. To me, these books that I saw pictures of, of two boys kissing or even a girl and a boy kissing is no different. On display, not just in the library, but on display is no different than going to a grocery store and seeing a display of sex toys and condoms. I mean, it's just inappropriate. So, so I think just like if I had children, I can censor ties the television. I should be able to do the same with books. If I had my child go to the library, I shouldn't have to worry about what book they pick up or what are they looking at or, you know, things like that. So it's, in my opinion, it's one thing if you're going to have knowledge on these type of books, but to be on display is another. So I would like to see the new policies in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Mr. Tisdale?
Yes. Along that, along that vein, we had a couple of individuals speak last week and I watched their comments a couple of times on the video. The word parents was mentioned a total of three times. Children, child or children was mentioned 16 times. And I kept thinking if I was a child going into the library with displays by employees of the library who have a manager on site and commissioners to help guide the library and its policies, I'm thinking if I had a question about any of those, I might, if I was a young child, ask my parent. And the point I'm trying to make is, one, based on what was said last week, would assume that children are in the library by themselves. Okay. And usually if they're children to the age of 10, 11, or 12, and even then you have parents with their kids in the library. And just for a frame of reference, as times change, when I was in high school, it wasn't as far back as George, but Sports Illustrated was, was not even around when George was in high school. But when I was in high school, the swimsuit edition of Sports Illustrated would come out every August. And once it hit the stands, it was the most checked out periodical at Biloxi High School. And that, that lasted for a couple of weeks. And then we had some folks who complained about that. And then the library would still receive it annually, but it was behind the counter and you had to ask specifically for that issue. So it's, it's a different time and a different world that we live in. Couple of years after that, it's no big whoop. But the fact of the matter is there will always be a need for public libraries, for free materials to check out, whether there's an Amazon, whether there's a commercial digital bookstores or whatever. There are always citizens who can afford those things. And just like a free public education, free public libraries are, are essential to any well governed, well good functioning municipality. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. I'm going to try to wrap it up with my comments unless there's some more. I don't think there's any question that we want a library service in the city of Biloxi. That goes without saying. Any city certainly takes pride in however many libraries they have. So, so that core thing is not being questioned. What is being questioned in these budget discussions is an amount that we fund. And as I mentioned, it's well over 10% when you add on some of the other stuff, it, it goes even higher than 10% of our revenues coming in. And we are charged once a year by looking at those requests, non-departmental and, and other departments around the city, if it's an appropriate amount. Certainly we need to look at an audited income statement or, or your, your annual report, whatever we call it, to see where those monies are being spent and seeing what you're asking from us. Because whether the library is funded with a half a million dollars or a million dollars or $2 million, you know, those dollars should be spent appropriately. The other thing we've discussed, and it's become a highlight of controversy in the, the media recently is certain displays, you know, and we picked one that was recently displayed to talk and debate. Is it appropriate? How could it be done differently? Your board is, it seems like they're addressing it. There should be a mechanism where any displays should be run by your board before it gets to this point, in my opinion. But that's something that you're going to have to make a decision on. So that, that's a, that's another issue is, as a city, we have to discuss as a community and then come to a resolution, what is appropriate, what is not appropriate, and, and move on. But for today's discussions, we're talking about a budget amount that we're weighing. What is that amount? What is that request for the increase? And then at the end of the day, when we approve or when the mayor approves a budget, that line item, you know, hopefully will be reconciled. Any other discussions and we'll move on.
Just briefly, just like Ms. Newman, I've always been an advocate for our library system. I fought and, well, not fought, but worked with the county, our administration. And we got moved out of a ratty rundown trailer into a new library. But I do have some concerns about, you know, certain displays. I remember growing up, as Mr. Tisdale was talking about, and, and I guess Sports Illustrated was around whenever I was growing up. But when we would go to a bookstore, Books-A-Million or, or whatever it used to be in Edgewater Mall, adult magazines would be hid away. And I meant, I, I've, I've raised two children and, I mean, I had a 12, 13-year-old. I had to make sure, go tell him to take a bath or he wouldn't take a bath. And so I, I think that, that something just being out in the open for a kid to see, there are certain things that we have to protect children from that are sexual in nature. That, that we've done that regardless of what it is. I mean, you go to a bookstore now and you don't have a Playboy or a Hustler magazine display out in the middle of the, out in the middle of a bookstore. They have them there, but they're hid away where you intentionally go to those things. And so I, you know, I do have, I do have some issues with that. Some, some of the, the, those books that were out for a display when someone walked into the room. And I think that we have a duty as, I'm not saying that don't have them, but I think that if you have them, they need to be in an area where someone intentionally goes to those. And it's not something where we're basically indoctrinating or opening up minds that, that may not be open to something like that otherwise. And so that does call me, cause me some concern. And as soon as there are some policies accepted, I would like to see that as well.
Okay. Yes.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Gomes?
Yeah, I was just sitting here listening to the comments. I think Councilman, our president hit the nail on the head. We're here about the budget right now. We're not here about trying to legislate anything. The county have their own board and there's certain procedures and protocol that are already in place. And if we get away from handling protocol, doing things decent and in order in the proper way, then we're going to legis, we, we just might as well just legislate everything. So that's not our job. They have a whole board there. And if people have concerns, they need to take it to the board. Our job is to decide whether we want to allocate this amount. Is there a need for this service? We've established there is a need. We're establishing the amount that we need to give them. And then they have a whole board there that have certain procedures and protocol that they need to go through. And that's what we need to let them do their job in that area. Let's not take somebody else's job away from them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gomes. Okay. Let's go ahead and leave a comment. Yes, sir. Just want to remind everyone, this is a budget workshop of sorts. We're not deciding any final amounts necessarily today.
My name is Dave Vincent. I'm the chairman of the Harrison County Board of Library. I'd like to have the, our commissioners to stand. Four of the five are here today. Please press stand. These are people who give their time each week, each month, each day to try to have a good library system. And I like to go on record that we have probably the best director that you can have anywhere around in Sarah Weskey. Sarah Weskey, we hired her out of North Mississippi about five years ago. She has a doctorate in French literature, which I don't think any of us could even obtain that if we wanted to.
She's on Walmart?
But she, she gives so much. She works so hard and she's dedicated. I just want you to know that you have a really good person here, probably one of the best in the state, if not the state and other states around here. And so we're lucky here on the coast to have such a person here. And as you make decisions, and we do have a board and, and you know, I don't necessarily agree with everything that they, we had on, on some of these displays. And that's the reason why we're coming up with a new policy. There was no policy in the state of Mississippi. So we're the first in the state to try to come up with a policy concerning displays. So, and things are tough. The library is always at the very bottom of everything. You want to, you want to try to get money? Well, we're at the very lowest. And then Mr. Lawrence said we don't make money. Well, maybe we don't make money right now, but every mine that's here has been influenced by a library somewhere along the line. I remember the first time I've got my library card and went into the library when I was four, when I was 10 years old. First book I ever read in my life was Kit Carson. Because at home, we didn't have money. So I didn't have money to have buy books. So I was able to go to the library. And I think there's many children in the city of Biloxi who probably can't afford books, but they can go to the library and rinse. And maybe they think about space or something else or computers that they're going to go into. So the libraries really provide a vital service to this community. And what we're asking, I don't think is very much because everything's going up with representation. And we have to struggle every month to be, be able to provide what we provide to the city of Biloxi. Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, let's go ahead and move on to CTA, since that's another big ticket item.
Quickly, quickly. It's about the library.
Good.
I said you, you don't create revenue. That's what I was saying about the library. It's not a revenue machine. I'm not saying about nobody has money and all that stuff like that. That's what I'm saying. It's not like a lot of business that you create money. It's not the purpose of the library. And I agree with the, the most of the councilmen that to me the displays is inappropriate, period. You're dealing with young minds. It's just something that should have been set up. It's inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to CTA. Mayor, you want to open us up on CTA or you want to let them start their presentation?
That'd be fun, yeah.
All right. Where, where's Kevin? Where's Kevin?
Chris is here on behalf of Kevin and so am I. Unfortunately, Kevin's been sick the last two days and he's in bed today. So he extends his apologies for not being able to attend.
Thanks, Chris.
So I think we're going to start with a, a quick agenda for the things we'd like to present today, including a, a brief summary of the services that CTA is providing for Biloxi beyond just the fixed route and some performance data on CTA's performance relative to, to peers in our area. And an outlook for 2023 with specifics about the budget request. So Chris, you want to?
I'd like to just start out by just looking at CTA services for Biloxi. As we ran the transition currently, mostly, most people know the fixed route services along the coast. Right now, there are three routes in Biloxi. The Route 34, which we have four hybrid buses currently. We have the Beach Farm Service with two trolleys and the Seano Hopper with two trolleys. Over 300,000 riders per year. And I can tell you, say, pre-COVID, everybody's, you know, transit agencies are struggling with ridership, but we are up to 80% ridership base right now. with ridership, but we are up to 80% ridership base right now. Moving forward, and that national average of increase is only 60%, so we're way above that curve. The total service cost for Biloxi, the city pays now only 20% of the cost with the balance, the balance paid for by grants and CTA self-generated revenue. Self-generated revenue coming from leased within the Biloxi Transit Center and additional ad space along the coast within Biloxi and Fairbox revenue. We, the COVID grant, last year, we had a COVID grant that reduced the subsidy contribution by a little over $98,000. That is not available this year. That was that ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act funding. Here again, it's not available this coming year. The next services I want to mention are the service. We're looking at ADA pair transit service, senior citizen curb-to-curb within Harrison County for medical appointments, grocery shopping, senior citizen center visits, all paid for by federal grants, no city contribution to the tune of $500,000. CTA brings in.
Jeff, at the base, there's a little button on behind the base, right there. Try that.
Hit it once, no, twice.
Try it again. There you go. Sorry about that.
Brings in workers from four states along the coast. And I say that by saying we bring workers from, to Engles, Stennis and all too, but we're also working within casinos to solve some of their work transportation needs. The big thing right now is attendance. We're talking some too about van pool options. CTA Biloxi Transit Center with the bus terminal for Greyhound, hopefully future and Amtrak service will be the main hub here in Biloxi. Includes rental store space within Biloxi, the Transit Center to the tune of 60,000. The east-west corridor is still on the table. We have 1.4 million in planning phase right now that's already funded. The value to Biloxi for this phase is 700,000 over seven years. All capital projects right now are not currently. We have, we just brought on an electric bus and within our main facility to the tune of 1.4 million that was brought on. Of course, that bus is going to serve half on the, the route is right now in half of Biloxi. In two trolleys at 250,000, that's $500,000 for two years, a year and a half ago. Within two months, we have ordered and to receive six new demanders that are to arrive. That's 900,000. We filed by two trolleys being ordered for the Beach Comer, which is another 500,000. Route 34, the Casino Hopper Route serves all of Biloxi, within, of course, all casinos. And the Beach Comer is from Biloxi to Gulfport. But I'd like to add to the Beach Comer route, that's a heavy move within that, the tourist routes. And of course, we want to be a part of, we're being a big part, working with the tourism groups to be a part of the experience along the coast with the trolleys along the routes. I have to do something up, the year's act, which was at 2.6 million. Biloxi subsidy was 190,000, or excuse me, 294,000. We're not talking about what was requested.
You want to take the rest? Yeah. The CTA intends to, the southeast of, the highest, the highest revenue. Fairbox revenue as a percent of the total fixed route cost of any other transit authority on our peer list. The thing because of the local match that is ultimate to the question. Local subsidy operating cost of Biloxi is the lowest of any peer organization throughout southeast. And in fact, it's the average of all the transit agencies in our peer group. Next, the operating hourly fixed rate. We are currently only running about 74% of the operating. And subsidy per dollar, subsidy dollars per passenger, again, is best in class at 36% of the average of our peer groups. So this data all comes from the National Transportation Board and is usually updated every two years. I think the one thing I'd like to point from all that data is the staff there and Kevin in particular runs a really tight ship in a well-oiled machine and they.
I'd like to get into a little, consistently, consistently take over 150 surveys a month just to check on data, things that are moving trends. Some key points to take away from the data is actually 62% of our riders ride fixed route service daily. 87% do not own a car. That really shows that dependent ridership base we have. Our riders are low income, which is, they fall between the 11 and 24, 11 and 25,000 annually. A big part of this is something we have 41% work-related travel within our system. We broke that down into, is it casino work, retail, medical, other, over 50%, 51% assistant labor. I went to casino workers. That's, that results in 20% of our riders using for casino work going forward. Our customer service rating is consistently high, consistently 95, 93% plus. That consists of driver courtesy, keeping the schedule, access to bus stops. The satisfaction data is specifically from surveys of customers and not some sideline formulas that we've tried to create to.
Okay, now we get to the money part. The Biloxi, Biloxi total service hours, ridership and the total cost of service pans out against ridership at about 312,000 riders per year, which is done through the fixed route. This is strictly fixed and doesn't include all the ADA and other demand service related hours. So 25,700 hours is of service time is what's required for the current bus schedule. And this year, the cost per hour of that operating cost is up to 4% increase from last year, which considering that we've had tremendous increases in salaries, especially with drivers and maintenance technicians, increase in spare parts for maintaining the buses. I think the efficiencies that we've been working with CTA over the last year have managed to hold the inflationary increase to only 4% over last year. For your comparison, you can see what the service levels are for Gulfport, Harbor, and Ocean Springs on that chart.
I'd like to just, I think we get the gist of it. We've seen this dog and pony show apart and I don't mean to be disrespectful.
Parts of it, this is updated though, but yes.
Yeah, I know it's been kind of this. And it's, I'm curious, you appeared before us nearly a year ago.
Right.
And we talked about the casinos, their contribution and you made a statement, you thought that they, they should contribute. Do you still feel that way or?
Would step up to the plate and indicate that they would in any way consider providing part of the city's subsidies.
I can understand. Of course they won't. They've heard it all before too. And their response is going to continuously.
I was going to mention this.
Excuse me, their response is going to be continuously the same thing.
But we have gone and approached and this time, last year, I made a commitment that we would actually start meeting the casinos and investigate what we thought was possible.
Sure, sure. I certainly would encourage you to do that, but public transit is an important part as well. We talked about the library system as a service. Public transit is a key element of, not necessarily disputing that. But again, this is a hundred dollar increase that you're coming before us. Just a minute. And you're asking for. You've come back to how CTA is providing a service and people are riding it more than ever and, and your efficiencies are through the roof. When is the last time you've had a fare increase and what was that amount?
I don't know, it's been a while.
It's been a while.
We have talked about this in the, in last board meeting, in fact. And we felt that with the current inflationary impacts, that this coming fiscal year was not the right time to go raise fares. But I think we're going to take a very strong look at that for next fiscal year, because at some point, we do need to start further supplementing the subsidies that all of the cities we serve can be reduced.
Thank you. I need to give my colleagues time too, but I just, you know, you put this report out and in red and bold letters, it continuously throughout the document says no city contribution, no city contribution, the city only pays this, the city only pays that.
Yeah, I mean, the grants.
We spent a great deal of this budget for non-departmental for CTA, public transit. And we need to find ways to close that gap and $100,000, just saying you're going to pass it along through the city of Biloxi, you know, it just seems like that's the easy way.
Yeah, well, Kevin, that's not really the case. And in fact, if you look at the slide that's up here now, the ask is actually 2,682 dollars more than last year. What you got the benefit of last year was to get a government grant for COVID relief that offset part of your, your subsidy. But your subsidy was really 392,000 last year and we were fortunate enough to be able to apply that grant.
I appreciate that, but the document that I have here, which is the mayor's report of non-departmental, has a $100,000 increase.
Of course, I mean, it's got to come from somewhere, there's two choices.
To say it's only $2,000, that's a little insulting to me. The dollars is the dollars, it's $100,000 in our budget that we're considering to increase. So that, that's.
And the same thing was true last year. When we first started this budgeting process with the, with the mayor and Mike last year, we didn't.
Well, you're starting the budget process with us today, okay?
Well, we started first with them having discussions about, you know, where we could go with grants and things. And when we first initially put, put last year's budget together, we didn't have last year's COVID relief. It had not yet been granted by the federal agencies. We had it the year before and it was a 200 and some thousand dollar offset. So you've had two years that COVID helped cover the shortfalls. But, but this, this ask is not unsimilar to what prior years have been. Typically, your subsidy has been between 290 and 350,000 for the last 10 years.
Thank you. I got 10 seconds left and I'm going to let everybody else speak.
Yeah, one comment.
What I believe you need to do is look at that fare increase. You've already, it stated that you haven't done one in a long, long time. You need to continue to talk to the casinos that you've touted in your glowing report today that 20-plus percent is casino workers, not to mention the people that go to the casinos themselves. And then you got electric cars, you got all this other stuff that should provide some efficiencies and we should be finding ways to reduce the cost or to find other ways to increase the revenue. And I hope, that's all I want to say on CTA.
Yeah, well, I appreciate Mr. Glavine's comments. Another way to look at it was CTA took the initiative last year to go out, find a grant, roughly for $98,000 and save the city $100,000.
And one of the biggest difficulties we have is the federal grants for operating expenses, which that's fixed, fixed bus service is all operating expenses, what you're subsidizing. None of the federal grants allow, all of the federal grants require a sub, a local subsidy, whether it's us going out and selling ice cream on the side of the street as a CTA fundraiser or whether it's the city having to come up with the funds. The fact is, is that for every dollar you don't want to spend with a subsidy, we lose $5 of grant money. So the impact to the city is not just, oh, let's cut it back 100 grand, because that is a $500,000 cost of loss of services to the city to take that 100,000 out of the budget.
And I'll add that the, like I said, we only, that only increased, that money's not available anymore. We had that COVID relief money, we did put that forward, that was 98,000 last year within that formula. This year, it's only a 4%. Our operating, our hourly operating cost only went from 75 to 78, it's only a 4% increase. That's even on top of a 9% right now inflation and fuel prices, which were well in tune to, is 190,000 over, 63% over.
With no increase in your fares, with no increase.
I understand, but if you look at the fare contribution, let's say for a moment, we decided to raise the fares by 10%, just as a hypothetical, it would reduce your subsidy by a grand total of $30,000. And I don't think a fair increase of any more than 10% is fair to the low-income people that are actually using this service. So it's not going to make a huge impact to go raise the fares 10%.
Raise your salaries. Anyone else like to say something?
If you could, I didn't see it in here and I may have overlooked it. If you could maybe email us, over the last five years, the, what the cities gave.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a chart that I can.
Yeah, if you can just email that, just for reference, since this is just preliminary, that's all I have.
Mr. Denne.
I just want some clarity as certain terms are relative and have different meanings, different peoples. In here, you put the annual value of service and the annual value to Biloxi and you use the term value instead of cost. So if value, value is something that's different for everyone, right? How are we gauging the term value? What, what, is this, is this just? is this just supposed to be transposed for the word cost?
That is, that is what the total cost to provide those services is. But when you subtract out the grants, then you're paying roughly 390, 395,000 out of a total of 2.5 million roughly of services.
But that stuff's covered in some of the.
But the services, when I call it value, it's the actual cost of those services.
All right. That's what I meant, is value, did it mean the word cost?
Well, the value is above and beyond your cost, and then added value is no cost.
Not their cost, but the cost to CTA.
Right.
Is the value, okay? The actual cost of providing those services is about 2.5 million dollars.
Well, I mean, there is a, there is a per cost, provider, per cost. You guys have done all that.
Yeah, but see, we're able to use grants for everything that we provide except the fixed route service. That's the only one where the government grants won't pay without a match from the local municipality.
And so I went through with Kevin a couple of years ago, probably before the COVID issue, and discussed the whole fare increase. And while I understand it's, that's a very complicated process because if you add more here, you lose more here. And if you lose more here, you have to add more here. If you add more here, and you get more here. It's a ridiculous, what's the game, where you move the cups around?
It's also reduced, it's also reduced from when you apply for federal funding, that fare box is reduced before you present.
Right. So I know there's an algorithm, and we have to find where we can maximize everyone's benefit. The one thing I wanted to ask from you is, all these graphs, to me, they could be misleading because of the way I'm looking at them, right? I don't have, I don't really have the sources behind them. So when you look at, when you look at Baton Rouge, they have a base population of 225,000 people, which is far exceeds Biloxi and Gulfport. Their MSA is almost a million. You know, Pensacola is about 50,000. Their statistical population, but their MSA is 500,000.
The way the Transportation Board, National Transportation Board segments this, it's a range of populations. And so when we talk about peer groups, we fall into a particular range, which I think goes up to 250,000 population.
Right. But the MSA is more important because that's your metropolitan. This is how you get this. Because when you go into communities that have a million people in, you know, per body, per square foot, economies of scale setting, and now you can get more value. So that's, that may be misleading in these things. I just wanted to know if I could get the data behind this, to understand what you're trying to represent with these bar graphs, that's all.
Yeah, because like the ridership numbers. Well, that's seven rides, right?
Well, you understand, that cost, that cost for that bus that only has seven people on it is far greater than the cost that has 70 people on it. And so that's what I mean. The economies of scale, and it helps bring down the cost if you have more people on the bus. If you could, I just wanted to get the numbers.
And between the state and the federal, all these things are, they are a complex form on these grants to roll down to where you get to calculate how much local subsidy or local generated revenue has to be included in order to qualify for the grants. But you'll notice on the slide that's up there right now, there's a number of items that actually act as part of the quote "local match" because many of the federal grants are only 50%, meaning we have to cover. Local match. Harrison County grant that we get, and we give that to the four counties as part of their subsidy.
How many of these routes go into county? All the, the cities are all part of the county. How many of these routes travel in unincorporated areas of the county?
Zero on the fixed route.
Okay.
It's, we do a lot of on-demand and the van pool services and stuff like that is mostly what we provide out into the county.
The county's still receiving taxation from, I mean, we pay the money.
Yeah, I mean, in this case, your prorated portion of the county grant, you're getting dollars back from the county, basically.
How much does the county put into it?
120-something. I don't, it's either 120 or 125. I can't remember exactly.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
And you know, like the lease income that we get for the shops that are renting from the bus terminal in downtown Biloxi, you know, that lease, that lease revenue all counts against your total subsidy. Some of these other sources of revenue, your subsidy request would be 500 grand. And advertising is an opportunity for us. We've increased the advertising income somewhat this year. But now we're putting a full-court press, including going to put digital boards on the buses and the two main terminals. And we think we can, over the next couple of years, double the advertising revenue, which would. You know, there's sources of revenue that happens quickly.
Well, even something like that is added cost. You have to pay for the machine, the mechanisms, and you have to pay for maintenance, the gas, the added weight.
Yeah, but recognize that the capital projects, we get 100% funding. So it doesn't, it doesn't come out of your budget.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Mr. Newman?
Mr. Lawrence? Couple of things. Do y'all send an annual report into the city?
Not that I'm aware of. As I've heard from your live, from your discussions with the library, I figured you'd be asking for that. The, we just completed and the board approved last week our annual audit, the financial audit through the third-party auditors. So it is available now for public view as of last week. So I'll make a request to the CTA management to forward that to you.
Let me just sum up something real quick. If we increase this budget 35%, not you, the budget, that's rather out of town. You can't increase anything 35%. Can't do it. You don't have the money. You've got to take care of the taxpayers and the city and the bills we've got to pay. You come in, beat us all up, you want a 30%, 40%, 50% increase, these riders, that rider. You can't go around increasing this budget 35%.
Well, we didn't.
You were making your space. I'm telling you now, you look at us, we can't do that. You can't increase no 35% anyway in the city of Biloxi. You don't have that kind of income.
We reduced your budget 30% last year. We're not increasing it this year.
We're talking about right now, 35%. We gave you 294,000 last year. We normally give you around 300,000 pretty much every year. So you hadn't really reduced anything. You look back the last 10 years, we're pretty much, pretty consistent. The city of Biloxi gives you roughly 300,000 a year.
Between 275 and 350,000 is many of your typical years subsidy.
You know, you just can't increase anything 35%, period. You know, we like to increase some of these.
Well, again, for every dollar you have to cut, I mean, if the budget turns out that you've got to cut, the only option we have is to cut the services. And like I said, for every dollar you cut your subsidy, you're going to lose $5 worth of fixed route service because that's the only place we can cut from.
Well, same everywhere. We can't cut the services to the people. We've got 50,000 people in the city of Biloxi we're supposed to be taking care of. You got to cut your services. If that's what you do, then cut them. That's up to you.
Well, it's kind of up to the city. I mean, you guys have to choose what, how much that's worth to you. If you want to, if you want to cut the budget 25%, then we'll have to cut the service 25%. There's nothing else that can be done.
But I mean.
No, I'm sorry.
We can't do it. We can't just increase.
Well, we can't either. We, I mean, you know.
Have you looked at the financial statements that you said just came out? Are you privy to that information?
Yeah, I'm on the board. I certainly am privy to it.
Just asking, have the salaries increased or they've remained?
Oh, there were substantial salary increases. About six months ago, we lost almost half of our bus drivers and about a third of our maintenance technicians. And the only way we could restaff was to increase salaries. We would have shut down CTA without it.
We're allowing everybody to try to be, to match comps and be competitive within mechanics and drivers as well, within school systems and all too. So we did have that increase.
I'm just trying to understand that dynamics, you know? That's what we're up here to try to understand.
Right.
That's why I asked the question. You know, salaries have increased, all this stuff is increasing, but the fares, you're saying you can't increase the fares because the ridership would go down. I don't, you got to give that some thought.
It's not so much that ridership's going to go down, but if you, again, if you look at the chart.
Well, if it's not going down, sir, why wouldn't you consider a fare increase? All businesses, all businesses are increasing salaries.
Almost 25% of the riders make less than $20,000 a year. And with the majority of those using it as their main transportation to and from work, I mean, 40% of our ridership are taking the bus to work, which means that nearly all of those people are in that low-income bracket. It was hard for us as a board to justify asking CTA to do a fare increase this year.
Well, just as you had to make a decision to increase salaries for mechanics and et cetera, you've already stated 20% of your ridership is going to, is a casino worker. It might be in the interest of the casino industry to get that worker to work. I think they're in the same boat you are, needing help to run their.
Well, what they're doing though, is they're buying passes from us and giving them as a subsidy to their employees instead of giving it as a subsidy to CTA.
We're working with two casinos right now along the coast that are not only providing heavily comps for workers and some subsidizing transportation, so their employees can't get to work.
I mean, I will take back the feedback on the fare increase and reopen that discussion with Kevin and the board. But as I indicated, I mean, it's not feasible for anything more than a 10% fare increase. And, you know, that would reduce our ask to you by roughly $30,000.
To start, anybody else?
Talking about the employees, we probably down 85,900 employees. We had a workfare. We're going to perhaps increase pay again. All that affects our budget, just like you. So you're no different than Dan's and anybody else. We all have to go through the same thing. How you make it balance, we have to prove it to the people, make it balance, to keep the employee.
I understand.
Keep the city running.
I understand.
We have to do the same thing.
And if to keep the city running means it's a lower subsidy than our ask, and just like you, we'll have to cut a service somewhere. I mean, you know, there's not much else we can do. We don't have free money beyond the grants that we already have identified.
Like I said, I'll go back to saying that 98,000 was provided as a COVID relief fund. Yes, we did go out, we researched every angle we can for grant money and everything that's appropriate that we can bring forth to reduce the subsidy for the city, whether it be looking at additional advertising opportunities, which we are right now, to different areas of growth where we can offset that. But like I said, the big hit here is you not, you do not have that. Like, we only went up 4%, out of a 9% increase.
We're not arguing, we're just having a discussion, right, Mayor? We're not arguing, we're just having a discussion.
Right, which is only.
Mr. Dill?
Just out of curiosity, you have the numbers there. What would a 10% increase in the fare generate? I know you said it would be a $30,000 reduction in the ask to the city. That would also come with a reduction in match, grant matches, correct? So it'd be a greater reduction in.
Well, it would, yeah. So it's, because all the other, the fare box is part of the local match. It's taking it from your pocket and putting it in the fare box money, but it doesn't change the total service level.
Is that what 10% translates to is 30%, $30,000?
For the city of Biloxi, on a system-wide basis, it would be 65,000 or, you know, give or take.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else on CTA? Thank you, gentlemen.
You said you had two routes, that you take people out of Biloxi, bring them to DeIbraville. You take people out of Biloxi and bring them to Gupport. How's the Gupport and DeIbraville pay for the same thing we're doing? I mean, if that's going to be two big routes.
Yeah.
We want to keep people in the city of Biloxi, that's the first thing.
So we broke it up based on ridership, on the routes that are shared between the two cities. So we know what the ridership, leaving Gulfport to come to Biloxi and vice versa. And so we just prorate that based on the ridership.
Is Biloxi gaining or losing in there? We losing people to those cities? Or we gaining people coming to the cities?
You're gaining.
From what?
Because work, more people come to Biloxi to go to work than the other direction. And that's again mainly because of the casino workers.
So more people from Gupport ride the bus, come to Biloxi?
More people come from Gulfport to Biloxi than go the other direction.
Okay. And DeIbraville's the same, we get more people from DeIbraville to Biloxi?
I don't know, the ridership's so small to DeIbraville, it's, you know, it's almost meaningless at this point. It's just a.
It makes a difference. It's the businesses, they come here to go to, they spend money.
Yeah, well.
That helps Biloxi.
So it basically amounts to nothing much more than a ride from the terminal downtown here to the promenade and back. I mean, that's, that's essentially what they're getting as the sum total of their service to DeIbraville.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. I really do appreciate the spirited discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, I think the way we'll do the remainder of the items, if somebody wants to pick a particular item to discuss why it's a certain amount, we'll just go ahead and continue the rest. Once we finish with those, if there's any new items that you would like to introduce, to add to this list, then we can add it for the administration to consider.
Mr. President, I think you've got, I think, a copy that came of a request from the Center for Nonviolence, and you have copies of that. And I would suggest and recommend that that request be added to our spreadsheet, with 20,000.
We'll do that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So the, of the items that are on the list, does anyone want to discuss any of these items? I'll start for you to pick one, Mr. Lawrence, and then we'll kind of go around and back to you. Give everybody a chance.
I think Cruisin' the Coast, I think we should increase them, $5,000.
Who?
The Cruisin' the Coast. Somebody brought in $33 million.
They had five to Cruisin' the Coast.
They brought a ton of money, and they already have 5,000 for the coast ready to do for next year. I think that's a big thing for the city. I just think that's a big support. And once it does quite well.
That's a 20% increase.
I mean, yeah. And I asked Felix about the Martin Luther celebration. He said he'd like to just leave it where it's sitting right now, and then he'll deal with that next year on the 10,000. He just said, leave it like it was, 10,000. I asked Felix before he left, on the Martin Luther King.
Yeah.
And then, the one that I think King wants to talk about, the Boom Boom thing.
Yeah, just add another 2,500 to the Boom Boom, 12,500 instead of 10. Is that it, Mr. Lawrence?
No, no.
We'll come back to you as we go around.
There's one thing, when you get.
And again, this is not etched in stone yet.
On the Seafood Museum, what was that, 18,400? Like last year, you said it was 92,000?
That was a one-time extra piece that was asked last year, 12,000.
Say again?
That was a one-time ask from last year to catch up to whatever it was.
That was the request you made last year.
And we paid off something, or was that part of the statue?
You just asked for the Seafood Museum to have an additional 18,000 last year. I don't remember what it was.
All the museums are pretty much the same thing we've done before.
No, I think that was a statue or something that had.
Did you pay for the statue?
Well, that was part of the thing.
It was 38.
38.
So all the rest of the pieces, like all the museums.
I think all the same, 48.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Newman?
20. That's what, that was what, that was the letter that came, the additional 20,000.
Okay. Have nothing? Mr. Tisdale?
A couple of things. Let me take the Women's Center first of all. I just have a question. I see Ms. Riley there. What the mayor said, the funding last year was at 15,000 for the center and continue that into this year. Last year, we appropriated 5,000 for the Family Justice Center, and that was kind of a seed money. Was that money used this year?
We never received the money.
Well, you have to request it in order to receive it. The trick is, we appropriate it and then. The trick is, we appropriate it and then we wait for a letter saying, okay, I'm ready to collect.
So the answer to the question is no, it was not used.
Okay.
So I wanted to get to.
But the Family Justice Center is, is, you're still working towards that goal. You still need seed money, and, uh, you still have a couple of weeks, if it helps, in this fiscal year to request that five thousand dollars.
Okay.
And if, if you are looking for additional seed money, and I, I think Ms. Newman mentioned that, and maybe we wanna budget another five thousand for this next year. I just know that the seed money is important from all the cities in, in Harrison County to help you get that center established, correct?
Can we have your name for the record, your title?
Sorry.
Yeah, my name is Stacy Riley, I'm the CEO of the Gulf Coast Center for Nonviolence. Um, thank you for, for having me here. As you know, we've been here for a long time, providing services for anybody who's been affected by domestic violence and sexual assault, homicide, sex trafficking, child abuse, you name it, we do it. So what we have been, well, I'm here today to talk about a little bit more than what we've been doing for the last forty-five years. We've entered a big step, and it's kind of on what Dr. Tisdale was talking about, is our Family Justice Center project. We have ventured out and we have purchased a building in the city of Biloxi that's gonna act as our justice center. And it's gonna be something that we're able to use as our one-stop shop. So anyone who has been, been affected by interpersonal violence can walk to the door of this facility and get help immediately. Uh, and it's gonna be our location in the community, because, you know, forever, we've been the shelter that you can't know where it's at. But this is gonna be the place that people will know where we are, so we will have people that can walk in. So I'm here to ask you to consider appropriating some funding for this project to allow us to continue to provide these valuable services, and then the expansion of our services to the city of Biloxi and all the citizens we serve. Uh, I gave, uh, in the packet you have, uh, you have a copy of our annual report to kinda see the impact that we have on the community, as well as what all, uh, we have provided to individuals from, uh, the city of Biloxi, uh, to see that the breadth of the services. And we just know that this new facility, which should, should be open next month, you know, we're in the process of painting and doing floors and stuff right now, uh, will be able to fully function and provide us that, uh, that justice center, uh, model for serving victims, which will be that one-stop shop.
What is the ask?
We're asking twenty thousand.
And that twenty thousand is for?
It'll be for the operating costs for that, that location.
That, for the Family Justice Center.
Can you repeat that, Dixie?
She didn't hear.
She didn't hear you.
I said I would like to see twenty thousand each for the center, Women's Center, and for the Family Justice, each.
Uh, I, I agree with that.
Okay.
Have another topic.
I think they made her know, you gotta know the topic, okay?
Yes, I do have another topic, thank you, Ms. Riley, appreciate it. I know the Mardi Gras Museum, I see somebody from the Mardi Gras Museum here. If you want to come forward, Ms. Hunt and Mr. Theobald.
Thank you very much, I've not done this before, so this is our, my first time. I'm here with the Coastal Mississippi Mardi Gras Museum, but before we start, uh, Mr. Steve Theobald, who's our treasurer. We also have some other, Anna Harris is here, Patrick Chubb is here, and Bill Raymond that serves with us. I would first of all like to say thank you, um, for, you know I get emotional, sorry. Uh, I wanna thank you so much for your support. You know, I go back, Steve and I were talking, I go back to the Gansel House, Magnolia Hotel, and now we're downtown. We're downtown in Vumashay, so we're just real excited, um, about that.
Howard Avenue.
How, did I say Vumashay? Oh, well, it used to be Vumashay in my day, Paul Tisdale talks about Howard Avenue.
You're an important part of the Howard Avenue experience.
You're correct, thank you. I, we're here to ask for an increase. Right now, we get from you all, um, we get, help me out, Steve, two thousand dollars.
Four thousand.
Four thousand dollars a month, which is, go ahead.
Forty-eight thousand.
Forty-eight thousand a year. And we're requesting additional two thousand dollars a month to six thousand, be seventy-two thousand a year. And the reason why we're asking that, and Steve has expenditures, um, for the last three years. As you all know, uh, we spent a lot of money at the Magnolia Hotel. We were able to save some of that stuff and bring it over. When you, you sold the Magnolia, we were able to use some of the, the pictures and the, and the display cases. But over a period of time, we are, our cash value, we're running out of money. We are doing, beginning to do some fundraisers, um, we, Patrick Chubb, we're working on the possibility. We're going to do, um, where we're lowering our, the people can rent our area for some things. So I'm gonna let, Steve is gonna explain to you.
The museum had never really been in the finance end of operating a museum before Howard Avenue. Uh, the city of Biloxi, the Magnolia Hotel, there was no rent, there was no utilities, there was no insurance. We were grateful, we curated with Bill's help, we curated the museum with artifacts and, uh, made sure it was beautiful. We moved, found a spot on Howard Avenue. Now, the full budget of the, except for the support we get, of course, but the full budget, all the revenues and expenses are there on the Mardi Gras Museum. And we really weren't sure how that was gonna turn out when we entered into the agreement to open the Mardi Gras Museum on Howard Avenue, and if you haven't seen it, it's gorgeous. Came out better than we thought it would, but we're very pleased with that. So now we've got three years behind us. We opened in late nineteen, so we have twenty, twenty-one, and ten months of twenty-two behind us. And we can track our revenues and our expenses, and we can see that we came to the museum with a surplus from all the donors before the, mostly Katrina-related, but from the Mardi Gras Museum at the Magnolia Hotel. And we brought with us, I think it was about seventy-four thousand dollars. Plus, we're holding a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for us, uh, that Harrison County had donated for the Mardi Gras Museum. All right? That, our cash balance is down to forty-eight thousand dollars to change. And we're burning about two thousand dollars a month in cash flow just to run the museum. And what I've got is a finance report where you can see the details of the revenues and expenses. I'm gonna email it to you, I'm not gonna hand it out today. But the finance report, it compares those years, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, so we can see what's happening. And, um, we've got salaries, we've got rent, we've got utilities, we've got all of the aspects of running a business that come out of our budget. Your assistance is four thousand a month, Gulf Coast Carnival Association assist was seven hundred dollars a month. And, uh, the rest, we can get some grants or donations or visitor fees when they come in the door. So you'll be able to see all those funds on this spreadsheet. And, uh, you can see that for the last two years, we've spent about twenty-four thousand, twenty, twenty-four thousand dollars cash each year of our reserve funds. We have two years left, or we'll be, have, be looking at something else at the museum. That's all that I had from a financial standpoint, and I'll email you this. Do you have any questions for me on the finances?
Getting all excited, gotta turn my mic on. Roughly an, an estimate, Steve, um, with the revenue apparently is not meeting your expenses, would that be a fair assessment?
Please say that again.
Is your, is your, are your expenses exceeding your revenue on average?
Yes, our expenses are exceeding the revenue, being the, uh, contract payment from the city of Biloxi and the Gulf Coast Carnival Association.
And, and from what, from what Ms. Hunt said, about two thousand dollars per month?
Yes, sir.
Okay, another, what's that, twenty-four thousand to the forty-eight thousand would basically equalize the flow, the cash expend?
Yes.
Okay. The, the.
Break-even base, then we could proceed to try to grow the revenues through tourism, uh, visitor fees and sales.
Right, and at the old Magnolia Museum, before the, before the city sold it, uh, for a commercial enterprise, you had to find a space, you had to rent a space, uh, you carried some reserves with you when you moved over. But you, you're starting to go to those reserves, go through those reserves, and, uh, that's kinda put you in the position, like you said, with no experience in having done this before, uh, the museum that is, because the city really handled all that, uh, did all that stuff. So boom, it's all dumped on you at the new location. So, uh, after a few years of operating, now you see basically where you are and what, what it takes.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So what is the official name? Official name?
Official name, registered Secretary of State is Mardi Gras Museum Incorporated.
Okay.
We do business as Coastal.
Coastal Mississippi Mardi Gras Museum.
So doing business as kind of a trade name for marketing purposes.
Okay, seems like it would have a good ring to it, the Biloxi Mardi Gras Museum, but anyway, what, what you got?
Just real quick, I was just, you go with the twelve thousand. And I'm gonna say that because it was originally sixty thousand for all the different museums. Was a contract, we cut it twenty percent, that's how it dropped to forty-eight. So you have the Old Cave, you got Seafood Museum, and we've bought, it's forty-eight thousand for each one of them. So I said, it was originally sixty thousand, which would be a twelve thousand dollar increase. That's what they were originally before we cut them. So I would just set for this year, just go back to sixty thousand for each one of them. Cause you're gonna have to increase all three of them, can't do one. And that's how it works out with the twelve thousand dollar increase.
Mr. President, let me, let me ask, before the move and before the transition and so forth, I think our burden rate was about eighty thou, the city of Biloxi was fading about eighty thousand a year on keeping that thing. So that was, you know, uh, some of the, the, uh, impact of moving from one to the other.
So if I understand you correctly, uh, Mayor, the, the burden of the city.
Holding at the Mardi Gras.
Maintaining that, the, the Biloxi Museum and the old Magnolia was basically running the city eighty thousand a year.
Right.
And, and now with the management agreement at forty-eight thousand, they're not making ends meet, basically. They're asking for an increase to seventy-two thousand, which would still be less than what the city's burden was.
Back in the day.
Three years ago, for that matter. So I, 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 I prefer a two thousand dollar a month increase to bring the contribution to seventy-two thousand a year for the Biloxi Mardi Gras Museum. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
You can't, you can't increase one museum that you're paying the same amount of money for. If you're only twenty-four thousand, seventy-two thousand is gonna cost you more than it was before. And each one of them receive forty-eight thousand to run as a management contract. So if you wanna increase to twenty-four, then you're gonna have to increase all three of them, the Old Cave, and then the Seafood Museum, and the Mardi Gras Museum. You can't increase one when you're not increasing the other two. That's why I suggested half, and see how it works out for a year. That's just my suggestion, that's all. But you gotta increase about all of them, you can't just, they'll be right back here on their twenty-four thousand too. So that's another forty-eight thousand you gotta come up with.
So again, this is, uh, budget discussions, uh, Mayor, if you take into consideration somewhere between, uh, sixty and seventy-two, and, and let's see how that all works out in the final wash. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Have you emailed an narrative, suit, pro, finance report?
Yeah, we have all that, we're going to.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, uh, let's see, where were we? Mr. Tisdale, you got anything else?
That's it for the moment, thank you.
Mr. Barrett, you have anything?
Um, I, I think each year, the line, this fifteen thousand dollars for the soil conservation, isn't that something that we pretty much cut every year?
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't do that last year at all.
Yeah, we cut, but it was on there, and then we, we moved. I think every year that I've been on the council, it's been on there, and we've removed it.
Man, last year, Nathan, we tried to figure out exactly what they do, nobody could answer the question.
Okay, um.
That's why they dropped it last year.
Okay.
Um, and then the other thing is, I would, we discussed this last year after we had passed the budget. But I would like to see us give something to, uh, the Tunnels to Tower Foundation. They, um, just to remind anyone who, who isn't aware, they, they're based, they base the operation, the local operation out of Biloxi, and every year they have the, the Tunnel to Tower run and, and stair climb. And, uh, if there's someone in the line of duty who, who passes away or something, um, they, they try to pay off their mortgage and, and help those families. I know that, um, they, they helped with, um, the McKeithen family, the Locke firefighter who passed away last year. They paid his mortgage off, um, in Pascagoula. So I'd like to see us put something in there, twenty-five hundred, five thousand, five thousand, um, to, to help that. And they also bring a, a very, very large group into town for a couple of days for that event, so I think.
Mr. Barrett, why don't I suggest this, we reduce the soil conservation by five thousand, give them ten, and then move that other five to tunnels for towers.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, but I would like to see us, I think it's a great cause, and, um, the five thousand is minimal compared to what they bring into the city, um, for that event, so. That's, that's all I have at this, at this.
All right, is there anything else that we missed?
Yeah, so what do we do with the museums? Are we increasing them all?
I don't, I don't think we're increasing, I think we're just trying to put this in discussion format, and then we'll come back, uh, for the final, uh, budget to revise it, so.
I mean, you know, those three museums operate, and if doing a management agreement, whatever you wanna do, you need to do it for all three of them, not just one of them. You, you got, you got a different problem there, before, you know, that's not our building downtown. The Old Cave is actually owned by them, but it's just on our land. Seafood Museum, I'm just saying, those are contracts we have with all these people that run these things for the city. You know, I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, to give one more than the other, you just can't do that. Either make them all the same, or don't change any of them.
The management fee is, is what you're saying, but it's, uh, what you're saying, the management fee was forty-eight thousand for all of them, but the whole expense exposure and, and, uh, uh, cost situation, we need to be aligned. And I'll look at all of them to see if that's, uh, uh, you know, in line with what we're sending now, what we're committing now to where we need to be. I'll look at that and report this next go-around.
And the reason I brought the sixty thousand, because that was the original contract. And then we cut it twenty percent when things were bad, so the original contract was sixty. And I mean, to jump to twenty-four thousand, that's, that's, that's a lot of money for each one of them. So I mean, that's why I said twelve thousand, go back to the original contract, let, ride that out for one year, and see how it works out, that's all.
Well, I did.
That's all, we just make sure.
Look.
Thank, thank you, I wanna thank everyone here who, uh, gave us some feedback today in this workshop for the budget. Thank the council members, as always, for your well-thought-out input as well. We'll continue this process, uh, at our next meeting. We'll just determine if we're gonna have that, uh, because our next meeting will be a six o'clock meeting. We may start that a little earlier, so be, be aware of some details that may come out. Uh, are we, uh, Mayor, just asking, do you know what the topic may be or that you would like to discuss? Or will you just let us know as soon as you can?
I would like to recap both expenses and revenues at this point in time, and then we, we're working feverishly to, to come through some, uh, you know, balancing of, of in and out, uh, you know, dollars. And maybe, I don't know whether it can be finished, uh, for the first, uh, week. Uh, I can give you an update by the end of the week.
We'll, we'll get together and we'll, we'll determine that. Uh, at this time, the chair entered, uh, entertained a motion to, uh.
That's what I'm talking about, well, I don't know.
Uh, it's gonna be a bit earlier, we're gonna have a.
You're gonna have to wait until maybe.
Uh, this time, I entertain a motion to, uh, I guess we'll adjourn this meeting.
We'll get there.
By Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tisdale, any discussion? All in favor?
We'd be doing this.
Those opposed, motion carries, unanimous.